So. So for you guys in the audience, because of the. Run up election on December sixth, we need to change the date of our December sixth meeting. And so we're having a real quick actual meeting before the town hall that we're having. So if I could please get. No, actually, I'd like to call the special call meeting, City of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for November. Seventeen twenty twenty two to order. Let the record reflect it, all council members here for the next meeting. First up is review of the agenda. This just has this one item on it. Anybody need anything else? If not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Agenda is approved. The one item that we have is twenty two dash oh four oh, which is the consideration to change the meeting time of the December first work session and the date and time of the December sixth meeting because of the runoff election. And we'll talk about doing is moving that work session a little earlier on the first, the three o'clock, and then doing the council meeting at six thirty. So it looks like a short agenda. We'll be able to come in and get that done, just don't have time going for dinner or whatever. We don't have to sit too long. And then we come back and knock out the council meeting. If I could, please get a motion in a second to adopt twenty two dash oh four.
Make a motion to adopt twenty two dash oh four.
We have a motion in a second and a discussion. All those in favor of adopting twenty two dash oh four, please say aye. That stands approved. Next up is adjournment of the special call meeting. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn? Motion in a second. Alls in favor, adjournments, say aye. We stand adjourned at six twenty. I had an old section of the report.
Oh, I see you now. I got you.
Chief Brett.
Sir. Are you waiting on me? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm waiting on you, chief. I just want to get you over here.
Furthering community relations, mayor. Thank you.
And he did part of his job, but he did add that.
So I need to.
Nope, you just let me know when you're ready.
I am ready. I am ready. I'm ready. Can you hear me now? Yes, alright. It's gonna be a little less formal than our our normal meetings. First off, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Good to have a crowd in the room. We're going to kind of go through a short report from each section of staff, just on some interesting things that are going on, a couple of updates that are kind of universally relevant. And then we're going to focus in on with the planning staff, the planning director, because that is the planning staff, on developments that are both happening and are expected. And that's both inside and outside of Chattahoochee Hills, because obviously the stuff that's right around us has impact here. But also focusing on some things that we think are on the horizon inside. And when that's all done, we will do some Q and A and see if we can answer questions people might have. And a quick thank you too to staff for getting ready for this, because you know, if you follow these meetings at all, you know that everybody here is wearing two or three hats and working a lot. So this is always extra stuff, and I appreciate the effort that they put into that. I'm gonna start with just a couple of updates on on important issues that we've talked about in some of the council meetings recently. You'll remember that we've been talking about local option sales tax. That is something that renegotiates every ten years. All of the cities in Fulton County and Fulton County share a slice of the sales tax that gets paid by anybody who buys anything in Fulton County, which is nice, because about half of that money actually comes from outside, from residents who are visiting here or people that are visiting here. That money is used to offset expenses. For us, it's about twenty five percent of our budget. It's a big piece of our budget that we use to pay for things like road paving or, you know, public works and public safety. The interesting thing about that is the last time it renegotiated, Fulton County helped us fight off a money grab by Atlanta, where they were asking for more than their population percentage. So it was kind of a surprise this time when Atlanta was absolutely square with everybody and said, hey, we're just here to participate, face not population. And suddenly Fulton County decided they wanted thirty percent extra. It was an interesting negotiating tactic, because it absolutely unified every city in the county against Fulton County on that issue. We've been meeting every Friday all day for what feels like months, has been months, right?
It's just June.
With negotiation, arbitration, mediation, just these back and forth conversations trying to resolve that thing. It finally resolved last week, and the good news is while Fulton County is getting a little extra, it's phasing in over the course of the next ten years in a way that will make sure that none of the cities lose any money as it goes forward. You know, the Atlanta region is growing pretty quickly. They build that into their forecasting. Atlanta will be getting more of the upside of that growth than the cities are, but again, none of the cities will be negatively affected. The long and the short of it is, we were at about five percent through the last ten years. We're starting next year at the same five percent, even though collections are up about thirty percent. So while it seems like it's flat, it's actually flat, starting from a higher base. Every year, the Fulton County share goes up a little bit. Averages ends up averaging just under ten percent over the course of the ten years. And again, with the growth that's coming, we get a little less growth than we would have gotten. They pick up more of that upside, but it doesn't have a negative impact on our budget. That's the long and short of that. And it's also an interesting time, because there are, you know, some issues that it's beneficial for the cities to be working together on. And the cities are having a series of meetings based on some of those issues, because we all came together to talk about this local option sales tax thing. Enemy of my enemy, all that stuff, right? And that's just good news. It's good news for us going forward. Biggest thing that we've announced recently is Greystone's announcement. If you were here for the last council meeting, that's a project that's been discussed for the last two years. The EMCs are able, under state law, to create internet networks. They're not able, under that state law, to do it inside of their existing companies. So they can't use the same line and then and all of that, which is one of the reasons that none of the EMCs have actually done that anywhere in the state. But through a combination of begging, pleading, cajoling, whatever from us, and also, the reality is, these EMCs are public benefit utilities, right? They are nonprofits, and they are designed to do things. Put electricity in rural areas and all of that. And the the board of Greystone made a lead there, and they are setting up a program that will run internet, fiber internet from every single household in Chattahoochee Hills by the end of twenty four, which is much faster than it would have happened otherwise. And again, every single household, so they're not looking at how far you are from the road. They're not looking at all the things that were preventing everybody else from moving forward up to now. They're in the midst of a planning process right now, figuring out what the schedule was somewhere in late spring. They're expecting to be able to tell you. You should be done by this time. They're they're gonna roll out schedule to that level. They're basically starting from the town where their wires begin and working through the center. One of the benefits that they've got is that every transformer that they have already has fiber running to it, because that's so they're actually closer than you think to your house right now. It's just running that final mile to the houses. So a big deal. And that will be cost competitive with the really cruddy AT&amp;T DSL that people have that sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. For a level of speed that's about twenty times that. And then they'll also have the full gig tier. They'll also have the really high speed stuff that people in places like Cernby already can enjoy, because you know, the dense network that you're on wire for. So that's just a huge thing, and that is happening right now. Next thing, we and we'll be talking about this more in the next council meeting, but you know, we got our census update sometime last summer. And we've had a consultant working on a redistricting program, because every time your census is updated, you need to look at where your city council districts are and remap those. There are a lot of rules around that, about what you can and can't change. So we're we're pretty constrained. In fact, they only really came up with one potential solution, which we'll be talking about in the next council meeting. If you're interested in that, please come. The districts are drawn in a way that every council person stays in the district they're in. That's one of the things that they they try to do as a rule. But there will be some changes at the margins. People may not be in the same district they're in now. So if you're interested in that, please come the next meeting. And then the last thing, we just had a meeting today about this. Talked about this a couple of times in the meetings. Trust Republic Land is doing a project right now. There's this Riverlands thing that they've been working on, where they're engaging Chattahoochee River with trails and parks and things like that, all the way from above Atlanta down to below into Chattahoochee Bend. And we are one of the demonstration projects. We got a three million dollar basically commitment to build projects in Chattahoochee Hills to demonstrate that. You'll remember, we bought the new parkland on the south side of the river. And that's one of the places they're activating, and then also at the Campbellton. Both of those will have bathroom facilities and pavilions added. They're getting set up for primitive camping at the locations in a couple of spots. And we have we have an initial meeting with the architects this morning. Wanted to make an example of what they can do, because frankly, they're gonna be looking back at this and saying, this is what we can do. You know, let's get that done in your town, too. We don't have much to offer in terms of money, but we have some beautiful space that they wanted to do something cool in. And that is it from me in terms of just general updates. And next up is the city manager.
Let me admit some people. Some admitting people in the Zoom. It's okay. You can admit, check on. I was gonna stand back here, but. I don't wanna take up much time, because you know, I'm city manager, and I'm over operations, internal operations, as well as the external operations, but I have staff that does all that. So from my perspective, what I do is, you know, make sure I have a good team, and I do. So like, right now, you're in a room, and if you look up. I'm not gonna make everybody stand in active stretch, but if you look up, you're gonna see some ceiling fans. And you might think, well, no big deal, those are just ceiling fans. But here's the way I, what I see. I see a public works director that saw something that needed to be done. He saw old mismatched ceiling fans, took it upon himself, put new ceiling fans in. While he was doing that, you know, he's talked with Chief Brett, and for years, we've been talking about this room and having returns and vents, like in in duck work, like where's the air? Where's the heat? It's over here in the wall. Well, they crawled up in the ceiling. And we still have what was originally put up there, all the equipment that we need to run heat and air. We did seventy five percent through. That's the kind of team I have. They they take initiative and do those kind of things. So that's that's part of my team. And and Chief Brett, you see him all the time responding to everything. Because he's here. There's a person lost in the park all the time. He goes, he finds them with his team and bring him out. He responds to calls, day or night. That's consequence of living in the city. And that's including a lot that he's got going on outside of work. For those of you that know who Greg Brett is, he he stays very busy and and he's a family man. So he's got that going on. And my chief, a police is celebrating four years with the city and a birthday. We won't say how old he is, but just celebrate that. And he's in the city a lot more than you think. Because during the week, you know, normal business hours here, but he comes out on weekends and and likes to ride through the city on the bike, trails, gravel ride and stuff. So you might not see him, but he sees you. Because he's throughout the city, right? And so that's what I like in in a police chief to be, you know, here, even when, you know, it's not expected. And going over to Mike Morton, who's been here the longest from way, way, way back. And he was our only only planner for the longest time, and we hired somebody, and then I was back to being the only planner. But he works some some crazy hours. If if you get an email from him at one AM, he's up till one AM. That's why I turned my email off, because I say, if you need me, call me, because I'm not gonna respond to email. But we, speaking of community development, we we have a new person starting on Monday, because Nathan left and went to he chose, he chose to take a whole new type of danger. So Community Development, he got into city management up in Missouri. In fact, he called me today, stuff. He asked me a question. He's asking us about how we do one of our policies, because he had an issue with some personnel matters. So he's like, I'm gonna use y'all's policy. Y'all doing it right. So that made me feel good. But we got a new person starting in community development. And to me, if you come to city and you see Mike, he's no longer in the administrative area. We outgrown that, and so he's now down the hall, a couple doors down. So that's where Community Development Department is. Stop by and visit when we're we're building that up. And and then lastly, who's here is Dana. Dana is is Moroccan. You know, she knows. Yes. She knows. She knows the city. She's like, when she's here, she knows how to respond to pretty much every question somebody has. And she doesn't know the answer. She knows where to find the answer. And that's great to have. We do have a finance director now that's helped her alleviate some of the burden on her. But here she is tonight at a town hall meeting, and it's her anniversary tonight. So. But I guess, what, twenty one years? You know, it's like, it's okay. But so we have a lot going on in the facility. You know, our exhibit hall out here is 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 updated. We're getting ready to do Christmas exhibit hall, and last was done by Council member Searle out here, with that's where the cool will do. The nature center stuff, but that that is paid for by hotel motel funds. And so that's not direct tax dollars from you. And a lot of the renovations that we're doing in city hall, you see, like community development, that's coming from ARPA, the American Rescue Plan. And it's like I was telling the folks up here, it's not it's your tax dollars, but it's not your local tax dollars. It's all our tax dollars, because it's federal money, and we have to spend it. We have to spend it on projects that will be audited. So we make sure that we spend it in a very responsible way. So that's what's going on from facility standpoint. Budgetarily, I mean, the mayor talked about local option sales tax. That's a big deal. We we negotiated, the mayor's negotiated, and it came to an agreement. Did it make everybody happy? No, but we we know that if we didn't negotiate, we would lose that. And we didn't want to lose that, because that's money, as the mayor says, twenty five percent of the budget. We're very physically conservative. We make sure that we our expenditures are being spent here during the during the council meetings here, my financial report. We try to, we don't try, we do stay under budget when it comes to expenditures. We're very conservative when it comes to protecting revenues. And it's not like we get new revenue all the time. So we have to be very cautious with how we we spend our revenue. And you also see in the room that you hear when I said you look up at the ceiling fans, you see some TVs. I'm on a cordless mic, thanks to Providence Church and Chief Brett, because we want to make this more interactive. But we're gonna have, again, part of the American Rescue Plan Act, we're putting in these TVs and sound system with to be in the back. We'll we'll see our sound tech, Daryl here, who'll be in the back now, and it's gonna be a digital unit. And we'll have Zoom, like right now, my computer, my personal computer, because it works better, it's Microsoft Surface. But you you'll be able to see the people on Zoom, and they'll be able to see us a little bit better and hear us better. And the cordless mics will be up here for the American Council. And we're trying to to dress things up a little bit, too, as well. We're gonna make some improvements to this room. The floors you see have been stripped and taken care of. I know these are they're small things, but it's it's because the staff takes great pride. It takes great pride in the city and wants to represent citizens well. That's kind of just really nutshell. I can go into detail about the budget, but again, we got a lot of other stuff to talk about tonight. We want to get to your questions.
That's up. We have a quick comment by the police chief. Good evening. I'm Jim Little. I'm your police chief. November nineteenth. It's been a great journey being here. Just a couple of things I wanted to cover tonight. Last weekend, we we had the the home invasion robbery, shooting. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. The suspect in that has been arrested in Alabama. He's facing multiple charges in Alabama, Coweta County, and Fulton County. But he he was captured fairly quickly afterwards. One of the things we're working on is communication. There was some frustration that we didn't respond quickly enough with the information, because someone had posted something from a scanner Facebook page. And I want to explain to you a little bit of how that works. The initial reports that I received and everything were wrong. We were initially told there was a robbery at Cocker Mill Park. There was not. So it takes us a few minutes to sort these things out. And I want to get the information out to you quickly. One of the things that I am doing is working with Chief Brett on the Everbridge system. If you're not signed up for that, please sign up for that. That's one of our fastest ways to communicate with you. A lot of times, we can't get right on Facebook, but we can from our phones to do a quick message and have that sent to your cell phone or wherever you designate that message be sent. We want to get the information out to you quickly, and we want to get it out accurately. When there, especially if there is a threat in the community. The other thing that I need from you, if you see, I got a couple of reports a few days afterwards about the car involved. Said, yeah, I thought it was strange. I saw this. Please call us. Please call nine one one. I would rather our officers respond to a hundred calls that turn out to be nothing than to miss the one call that that was actually something. That's what we do. We respond to those calls. Right? So you know your area better than than we do. Trust your instincts. If something doesn't look right, please call. And again, I would much rather respond out there and have it be nothing than to miss that one time that it was that it is something. The other, the other thing that we have is some of the programs that we have, one is a vacation house check. I don't know if anybody in here has used that. When I first put that out, it was real popular, and over the last three or four months, it really hasn't been getting used very much. If you go on vacation, you fill out the little form that we have. You'll have an officer come to your house twice a day. You also receive an email after the officer leaves, letting you know what the condition of your home is. Doors are secure, you know, windows are closed. Right? That type of thing, just to give you that peace of mind that your house is okay while you're out of town. It's a great program, and I said, it just gives you that peace of mind that everything's okay back home when you're there. So please, you know, take advantage of that. And if you have questions, you have concerns, my office is right here in the hall. I leave the door. If I'm here, I leave the door open. And you're welcome to come anytime. I'd be happy to talk with you about your concerns. If there's something that you would like to see us do that we're not doing, I'd be happy to discuss that with you as well. And I would ask that you don't hold that I ride bicycles against people.
During bicyclers.
One thing the chief mentioned was the Everbridge system. There are people here that probably know about it, but there are people that might not. We have this text alert system that we use. For example, if a tornado warning gets called or something like that, if you're signed up for the program, you'll get a text saying, there's a tornado warning. It's in this area, whatever the details are. It it's been used at times before. There was a a huge police operation at one point at some place in the city, and and they were letting people know, you know, if you see somebody call us, because there's a suspect that had gotten away, and they knew about where they were. If you don't have that already, if you're not signed up for it, if you go to the city website, the signup information for that is there. Right? Still, yeah, on the website, and just do sign up for that. We don't use it often. We we don't like use it to advertise. We're not gonna spam you. But if something's going on in the city that we feel like people need to know about, that's the the quickest way to get that information. That's what we generally use it for. It's mostly for severe weather alerts, but again.
Next up is Chief Brett.
Before I get to mine, Greg, I forgot to tell you guys, we have cookies and beverages up here. So please get up and and have some.
Beverage is if water is to your taste.
Yeah, it's water.
Wide selection of water.
Water.
Go help yourself. I'm into my ninth year. I cannot believe I have been here serving in this role that long. It seemed like just a little bit ago, I was involved in a whole other career. Some of you don't know that firefighting was not my thing forever, but it's the second calling, I think, I had. So I am glad to 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 be here. I I called a mentor of mine, Jim, and I realized we knew this guy. And said, can I, can I do this? His name's Danny Bowman. He's a statesman firefighter of fifty plus years that served in Forsyth County. And he knows me pretty well. And he said, yeah, I think you can do that. And honestly, there was no recipe for how we would go about it. You know, I just take up the mantle, the the white helmet from Ronnie Laum, my predecessor, and go about it. We have changed a lot of things. We have added a lot of things. We try to apply vision. I wanted you to know that for for us, for my department, anyway, we develop, I develop every year, I sort of touch up a strategic plan. If you'd like to know what that includes and where we think we are in a year, or where we're gonna be in two or three or five, then I'd certainly love to share that with you. Mayor has listed two things there that are very important, but I want to refer to a couple of other items that are over here. There is always a concern about when you make a phone call in the city, a nine one one call, that you're gonna get our dispatch center, you know, whether you're trying to get in touch with police, or whether you're trying to get in touch with fire or whoever. So there's a flyer over there when you call nine one one. And it'll help you put some things together in your mind before you're making that call or as you're you're making that call, what you get to do. So please take that. One or two other things over there. I want to mention the Everbridge thing. We call that. You'll see the flyer on the website, Chat Hills Alerts. So yes, it does get used a lot for weather. I'm not a weather prognosticator. I don't pretend to be, but I do have friends at National Weather Service in Peachtree City. And I'm using several different softwares and and means for alerting that allow me to see things, three hundred and sixty degrees around our city for quite a distance, and I'm able to hopefully get information out to you quickly. So if you don't agree with me, as someone said, hey, you missed that one when I said it was gonna rain and it didn't, and and that really wasn't it. But, you know, I wasn't trying to be the weatherman. But Chat Hills Alerts is that great way that, for instance, for the last, for the incident that occurred Friday, two weeks ago, that we could possibly inform you that, you know, you might want to know why there's so many blue lights or red lights somewhere, or on into the weather, bad weather time of the year, what roads are closed, or we have really iced up, or where public works might be sanding and salting some things, or power lines down or whatever. We worked with Greystone to make sure that we get that information out and over to them, so that they get to you quickly. And that we we can try to get you back to the normal thing. But if you can go to the website and print it, great. If you can't, there's a bunch of them tucked into the document holder right out here in the hall. So you can grab one of those. Tells you how to email it right back to us, plug it into the system. On the Q sheet for the agenda, it mentions a new fire truck. When we started in two thousand and eight, we inherited fire apparatus that came from Fulton County Fire Department. And I'm gonna tell you, the engine that we relied on for a long time had two hundred and seventy six thousand miles on it, over twelve thousand hour operational hours on it. And that was when those meters stopped working years before I became interested in it. So skip ahead, we've 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 sort of squeezed the turn up as much as we could all along and and bought some really good used units, but now we have purchased our first new fire engine as a city. It is a commercial unit. And it is pretty in red, and we expect to put it into service within the next couple of weeks. Had a little bit of a hiccup in getting some of the upfitting done and things ready to make it roll. So that will mean that we've got a great reserve engine when we need it. You all know that we did buy two years ago a big red tanker, we call it, tender, that can also serve as a fire engine. It pumps just like a fire engine and carries three thousand gallons of water. So that's that's a great thing for you all to celebrate, that you have that. The concern, it seems, every time we get together, and I was with all the fire chiefs in South Fulton. The um concern, it seems, every time we get together, and I was with all the fire chiefs in South Fulton today. Uh, at lunch is what is going on with our transport services provider, and that's Grady Healthcare. Um, make sure you know this, we are not, um. Our city does not hold a license to transport patients. Okay, so we are not a transport provider. Unless, unless circumstances warrant it, and then the state law allows for us to make that. Make that transport, but we have to think very carefully and cautiously about that because if we leave out of here with our unit, well. What units and what people are backing us up while we're going to the hospital with a patient, right? So in the evolving relationship, since a new Vice President Ober Operations uh came into place. Uh, Mr. John Hanson, we've seen Grady tune up their services. And and here's the more specific ways that that has occurred. Uh, they increased their hourly rate to be able to hire more people. Okay, so that they would want to work in emergency medicine. Uh, they have now, as a result of those people and the available vehicles they have, dedicated more ambulances. To nine one one services in South Fulton. That might mean not mean that much to you, but some of these folks up here, especially the mayor, will remember that when we were being served by AMR. They said they had X number of ambulances in our South Fulton area, but they were also doing totes, we call them, from point to point. Someone needs to go from home to dialysis because that pays a lot of money. Okay, and when that unit's tied up and then the phone phone rings for a nine one one call emergency. Where that ambulance can't be used. That's not the case today. Okay, so Grady has has done some, uh, made some changes with Fulton County. Uh, in their dispatching, which is going to allow for some more rapid deployment of of ambulances. And they've changed their posting plan that allows for these ambulances in the South Fulton area to be closer to us. So that should reduce uh the amount of uh the response time. And um I mentioned a minute ago that when when we have to, if it is a life-threatening circumstance. And we can't, don't have a Grady ambulance coming to us soon enough. Um, we are allowed by law to make that transport. So Grady recognizes that that can occur. And has occurred for us three times this year already. Okay, uh, so they understand that they've got to have some mechanism by which they can immediately send an ambulance down here. And be right in our area to backfill us until we can get back. That makes sense? Some of these are stopgap measures until we can see other bigger issues fixed. You're aware of Mer- of uh Atlanta Medical Center being closed by Wellstar? Uh, you may have heard that there's a possibility for the formation of a hospital authority to reopen it and operate it. Um, and with the fire chiefs today, we talked about the fact that this problem. Ascends all the way to our state legislature and the Health and Human Services Committee to say, you know, what? What is being done about this big problem because it's actually statewide. It's in fact nationwide. That hospitals are closing and creating, um. I think the term used by that long, long constitution was an NMS desert or hospital desert or something like that, so. I guess I'm saying all that to close by saying, we, I try to keep myself as involved in that discourse with fire chiefs and Grady Healthcare. And uh people on a higher level, even the Fulton County Commissioners as needed. Uh, the mayor's been involved in a lot of that. We've talked uh with all the mayors of the city. I presented on behalf of the fire chiefs our concerns to for the cities and to to talk about how uh county could could help us. Work to overcome some of this and um keep this perfect storm from continuing. But um, that is the thing that I guess that consumes my time mostly. Because ninety-five percent of our call volume per annum is emergency medical. Okay, fires are not so common anymore, thankfully. But um, that's what I have. Just uh. One last little thing. We're very cautious about who we hire. And so I make every applicant that comes to us read this. This is what I wrote. I said, this is my patient care creed. And when they interview me, I say to them, I want it to be your patient care creed too. The people of Chattahoochee Hills expect this kind of personable, professional care. And I know these people pretty well, so if you can't subscribe to this little philosophy, then you might not fit well here. And I want you to read that. There's a couple of copies over there. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Next up is Daryl.
Yeah.
Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Now has the microphone in his hand, and that's a dangerous thing.
For 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 you that don't know me, I'm Daryl when I am the Public Works Director. I'm also responsible for. Uh, all the roads in the city, paved in gravel, which is about a hundred eight miles of road, but thirty-eight of them are gravel. Uh, when I came here, the gravel roads were in, you know what kind of shape if you live on a gravel road. And that was priority one, and we worked hard. Uh, I met with mayor and council. They told me to come up and plant and what you need, and they provided everything I needed. And the proof is in the pudding. You see your roads today. It was nice. I got a phone call for Alton Powell today. But you wouldn't mind if I said this. He's a very hard man to please. But he's, and now he's a very like, I like him. We have great relationship. So he called me today about the sewer system in the city. And complained that y'all did so much hard work finally getting our ditches right. And you did so good. I hate to see them destroy what hard work. And I said, that's okay. We're on top of it. They have to get through the city. When they get through. Um, I've built a good relationship with Charisus over the project with Fulton County. And they promised us that we're going to give uh get it back to where they were, no matter the process, even if we had to get involved. Even if we get involved, it'll be back like what it was because I cannot span our roads to be in bad shape if distress is now. It very much so does. Also, I'm over the parks, all the parks in the city. Uh, any development, just like the uh cell tower in this in this corner of Cockermill Park. I just know FYI, I know it's up, it's 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 there. I know that it's what's there. Why, why it's not working? It's a lot, maybe six months. There's a lot. You have to feed it. All the wire has to come in to feed it so you can use it. And I know it's frustrating for some people, but just think, the tower is there. And just be patient with that process and it is coming. Also, I'm uh the rec for the ball field, Lala. Rhys helps. She does all, pretty much all the uh uh scheduling for ball field, but we maintain it. We keep it right. Uh, we spend a lot of money and time trying to bring it to a standard I feel like that the city deserved. Also, I work uh with Community Development Mike. All the projects that have been and they're going to be approved through mayor and council. I oversee. I go out and make sure erosion control is in place, make sure roads are built correctly, make sure the shoulders are right, uh storm drain. Uh, make sure before they get a final C on the house, we go out there and do an inspection, make sure they're not washing and getting into our into our ditches. That we work so hard to maintain. So the right of way, and a lot of people I don't, do not understand what right of way means uh in front of my house. A right of way gives the city permission to be able to progress. If we need to go through there, just like the sewer system. Uh, that Fulton County is running through the city that I I have to be part of because any development in the city I have to be part of. So that gives the city to, when we move forward into the future, it might have to be cable. Uh, any kind of communication stuff goes in the right of way. That gives us the city permission to progress. And it is your property, but the city does have a right of way. And if somebody pull, it wants to turn around in your driveway, they can because there's about twelve feet that that they can use your driveway to turn around in. So um, this, I just want to make sure I cover all my bases here. Uh, I've I've been here. This is my work on seventh year, one month behind Robbie. Robbie, but I think he told me. It's a first priority was to hire Public Works Director. So Greg and him uh interviewed me. It was a good interview. It was a, it was definitely what I was supposed to be done.
It was a long interview.
It was a long interview. Yes, it was. It was, it was good, and I was glad because doors opened for me. This is what I want, and I felt like. When I came here, the city needed what I had to offer, and they have, uh, mayor and council and the city manager have allowed me to to show you what I. I believe that I can blame the city too, being part of the staff. I work a lot with Greg on all, every time there's a storm come through the city. Greg and I are usually ninety-nine percent of the time with the first ones here. Me and him is, if, don't take this wrong, we slept together many nights. And we have, we spent uh nearly week here several times. When it snows, we get out. He's following behind me on the motor grader clipping snow off the road, putting salt out. Uh, when the storms come through and trees are all over the road, um, all night long, cutting trees. He's always there. I remember the first storm we ever worked on, uh, it was raining real hard and I had my jacket on, my boggan on, and it was cold. And you know, within ten minutes, we're soaking wet. So halfway through, he goes home, gets me a jacket over there on, gives me a boggan on. And the next morning, he goes house and washes it and brings the stuff back so I have fresh stuff. Uh, it's my fault for not being prepared, but you know, you think with rain jackets, you're going to be good. But he's always, he's always been supporter, so I can't thank Greg enough because uh without him. And I would be as successful as I am. Also with Mike, uh. Me and him have, in the last couple of years, worked really hard uh trying to get. Uh, the development part tightened up, making sure that people are doing what they say they're going to do. The developers doing what they say they're going to do. Uh, when people come in and build in our city, we want to make sure that that if you live in the city. And and so so you hire a contractor to come do a job for you. It's our job to make sure that contractor is giving my residents what you're paying for. So if you're going to have a driveway go through your yard and you hire contractors, come and just do whatever they want. And then they leave and then you're left with a raggedy driveway that doesn't work, does, and you're spending more money. And so we work really hard on making sure that we're working with developers and the people that are doing projects in our city. Also, uh, the film and industry that comes through. I work real hard making sure that when they film on our gravel roads, there's a, there's a. I guess a a tightness of what they can and can't do, traveling with the heavy trucks and stuff on our gravel roads. We spent so much money and time to make sure we stay, our gravel roads stay in good shape. Uh, also, when we have events in the city, I try to say, I feel like I. It's good to say that when we have events, I'm usually the first one here or the last people to leave. So I want to make sure that we're successful. So if the vent is put on by anybody, I always like to be there because I want to make sure we always are successful. Because if one of us fail, we all fail. Uh, when I first come here, there were several people that had been wanting to do some trail races in some of the parks and. Uh, so I started working with pig racing and and worked out some stuff. They started doing events in the in the park. Some trail races, which was really successful. They hadn't done it a couple of years and COVID kind of settled back a little bit. But I'm handled that as as well. Also, I work with the police department on road signage and stuff, just like. We have some bridges that are uh very light tonnage that people should not be going on. And we work real hard, uh, Chief Little has worked really hard on making sure that the road, people are doing what they should be doing. And and being trucks or being on the roads they shouldn't be on and making sure they're detoured like they should be. So it's, it's been a, I have to work with everybody and I wear many hats, just like the sound. And the all the stuff that goes on in the city, all the everything, every building that the city owns, I have to maintain. It it doesn't matter what, if it's a building that's old and raggedy fall down, I wish it would fall down and go away, but. But I have to maintain all the buildings. And if if it's, if it's city property, I have to make sure it's cut and maintained and and taken care of. So I have a lot, a lot uh on my shoulders, but have great staff that always works with me. And a great mayor and council that always supports me and hopefully I build uh trust with the the residents. And when I say I'm going to do something, it might take a little while, but I always do what I say I'm going to do. And usually if I see a need in the city, I usually don't ask, can I or should or who's going to do it? I just, I take it upon myself just to do it. Because I know it's got to be done. Somebody's got to do it, so might as well I do it. Uh, so basically, that's, that's, uh, I will make sure, I think, I think that's, I'm gonna wrap up my, I won't be up here for hours. We got plenty to talk about. Thank you very much for your time.
Mike, Mike.
So Mike needs a mic. Thank you. I'm gonna grab the map.
So our planning director, Mike Morton.
Thanks. You heard Daryl say that uh stresses him out when the roads aren't right. He's, he won't say it too, but I'm pretty sure he'd really rather you wouldn't drive on them. So um, I'm going to talk a little about um, uh, current, some developments that are approved, some of which. Some of which are happening, some of which um are not, not much happening yet, but are approved. And then um some other sort of uh uh planning and um code writing work that we've got going on. And then um some other, some other developments that are are nearby, but not uh not in the city. Um, some of the recently approved um uh projects are um the. Hard for everybody to be able to see this at once. Um, Bear Creek subdivision, it was a subdivision that had started under Fulton County as just a residential subdivision. Um, two hundred and fifty-six acres and um under new ownership now, they've gotten uh rezoning to mixed use hamlet. And um they're working now on getting their um first land service permit for the first phase of that. That was um, we'll, we'll probably see some buildings starting there uh sometime, sometime next year. Uh, that's on Wilkerson Mill Road at the corner of Jenkins Road. Um, and then um in Serenby, of course, Serenby is always expanding and always adding new. Um, new land and new development within uh Serenby. They've got a hotel coming and town center up in the, back in the original first phase of Serenby. Um, there is a a new school that's uh under construction. Um, in uh near the latest phase of Motto. Um, Motto itself, the the third phase is um. Well along, they're well now into the the second half of that um of that phase and they're, they're working on ground. Um, uh, preparing the ground for the next phase down in in Coida County. Which would be an extension of of Serenby Lane that snakes through and goes down into Coida County. So um, they've got a lot of work going on there. They also got some um farmettes along Washington Road on some newly uh rezoned lands being developed as farmettes. Um, sort of sticking out um here and connecting to all the way up to Hudson Ferry Road. Um, uh, we've got building going on at the north end. Um, there's a builder Jeff Lindsay Community. Um, has been building in Heatherwood. They're just about done in there. That's uh sixty homes on about a hundred acres. That was uh developed under Fulton County as well. And then the estates of Cedar Grove. Um, also uh begun under Fulton County and um the same builder is going to be building in there. That should get started pretty soon too. Um, that's at Cedar Grove Road near the, near the roundabout, and that's going to be a total. Remember the actual total, somewhere around seventy houses uh in there. And then the same builder, um, if my information is correct, I heard from them that they were picking up the lots. I often hear from people, yes, we're buying it or we want it, but maybe sometimes the ink isn't dry and sometimes things fall through. But um, there's some lots that were platted right at the uh up on uh Cockermill Road where um Brock Road sticks up. Sticks up to the north a little bit. Anyway, a bunch of one to five acre lots in there. Um, they've been there since the beginning of the city, also subdivided under Fulton County, I believe the same builder has those and um will at some point probably start uh. Uh, start work on those. Um, there's another little hamlet, um, uh, right across Atlanta Newton Road from Serenby. Um, called Series and it's about ninety acres, so it'd be about nine, little under ninety houses, um. Some restaurants, some agriculture in there and um. Uh, also on the east side of the city, but mostly in Palmetto, something called the Pizza Farm, uh, events. Uh, pizza, uh, a variety of uses, agriculture in there, some walking paths. And uh, that's, but that's some, some of that's Chat Hills property. They got a special use permit for um for the the stuff that's going on there. And then uh finally recently approved is um El Baroso, a um country in an event center. Up here between Cockermill Road on a hundred acres, little over a hundred acres between Cockermill Road and uh Highway one fifty-four. Um, you've probably seen the entrance on uh the two sort of tower sort of structures on Cockermill Road. Um. And uh they've got some orchards in there. They're going to be uh building some cabins and then and and hosting some, some special events. Um, we've got some uh work going on behind the scenes, um, uh, that'll involve the public. Um, uh, working on the historic crossroads, uh, there was a plan, uh. It was funded by the Atlanta Regional Commission for Campbellton, um, which involved the city of South Fulton also. We're working on that to um turn that into code so that things can actually start coming out of the ground there. Um, also here at RICO, the RICO Crossroads, um, I've got another process going on. I'm just getting underway with RICO. Um, that also will lead to some code where some things can happen um here in RICO. Um, again, these historic crossroads that are identified in the comp plan, um, uh, from the beginning, RICO from the beginning. Uh, Campbellton was annexed later, but as soon as it was annexed, and it made the, it made the list. Um, uh, we've got a transferable development rights ordinance. Um, we've. Um, uh, we've got a transferable development rights ordinance. Um, we've had it, uh, since the beginning, actually Fulton County's. Um, uh, wrote one, um, couple of, uh, TDRs as they're called were, were created. Plan what the whole thing is in just a minute. Um, uh, it's carried forward, but it hasn't been fully activated. We've got some new language now. It'll be going before council, um, right away and, um, it should finally activate the entire ordinance. So the way the TDR program, transferable development right program works is that, um, where development, significant development is allowed. Places like Serenby or one of the villages that might pop out of the ground or, um, places like that. They can, um, choose to, to develop more densely by paying property owners throughout the rest of the city. To preserve their property. It would require conservation easement, which is a legal instrument that would limit the development that can go on on that property. But, uh, the property owners out, um, throughout the community can, um, conserve their property by putting a conservation easement on it. And then sell the development rights off of that property. So it's a chance for people to continue living on their land exactly as they already have. But make money off the land. And then that land gets preserved in perpetuity. And then those development rights that are bought by the developers in the dense developments can, um, add additional density in those, um, in those communities. So, um, we've got a few things, um, that we're adding to the TDR ordinance that'll make it a little, um, uh, make it, make us able to activate it. Um, and then, uh, finally, we've got some other zoning updates. Some of them are little tiny tech changes, but a few zoning updates that'll be going through. Um, probably on the same calendar, uh, it's not, not clear if that's gonna be, um, exactly on the same calendar, but it'll be following, following pretty quickly after, uh, after the TDRs if that happens. Um, and then finally, some, some developments that are nearby, um, but not under our, um, city control. Um, Harrison Merrill, who, um, uh, develops Fox Hall across the river, Fox Hall Sporting Club. Also owns this, uh, this, this land here in, um, uh, where there's a big gap. In, uh, in, in Chat Hills and our understanding is they finished the D, well, they did finish the DRI process. Development of regional impact process, which is a regional review and they're going to be getting start, started building on that land. That's all Palmetto. But it abuts, it has a big border with our city, abuts a lot of, a lot of Chat Hill property. He also owns a little over five hundred acres just to the north and is, um, making plans to, um, to develop that as well. And so I expect we'll see an application on that property fairly soon. I don't know what their schedule is, but really probably a matter of once away if, if, um. If I'm correct, um. On the Merrill property, the thousands. The DRI says, so it says, um, their, their plan here says seventy-five hundred residential units. Um, this map says two thousand acres, which includes the five hundred that are in Chat Hill. So that, that number might include what they think they're gonna do. Here, assuming they get approved for it. And, uh, twelve million to fifteen million square feet of commercial space is, uh, is what they show on their, on their plan. Um, and then again, I mentioned Fox Hall Village, just to the north of that, I'll, right across the river from us, there's a wellness retreat. Uh, that's been approved by the county. So those are things right on our border. On the, uh, on the west side, um, along Tommy Lee Cook, there are about fourteen individual little neighborhoods down here. Um, built or under construction. So there's a lot of impact down there on the south side of the city. And, uh, a couple of, um, sizable mixed use projects on, um, uh, on or right off of South Fulton Parkway. So across the street from the Publix where the land bank cleared and there's some industrial, there's gonna be some mixed use stuff. I've been described as mini Avalon going in there. And then farther up ninety-two, but not too far up ninety-two, again, the Merrills, um, have a project that I don't know the size of that.
Seventy-two acres, but it's pretty dense. It's going towards Campbellton.
Yeah, yeah, close to, close to Campbell. And then, um, there's some, also some new ones sort of up, up north near Campbellton. Or, or running up, up north along, along the river. In fact, um, uh, one of them is right there at that corner, the Campbellton corner. Um, same developer who's doing the mini Avalon, um, has, has that property and has a plan in with the city of South Fulton. Um, and then of course there are, um, you know, millions of square feet of warehouse, um, newly in or going in along, along the parkway. Outside of course of, of Chat Hill, but those, all those things are, are, um, on our borders and, and will affect, um. Uh, what you see happening here in the city. And then, did you want to talk about, uh?
Yeah, I mean, let's go ahead. So, I mean, you know, I know that one of the things that people are most interested in is what is coming in Chat Uchi Hills. And we've talked about this a lot. We, we talk about these a lot in our work sessions, you know, the things that are people coming in to talk to us. Uh, you know, hey, we've bought this land or we've got this land or we've got this land in our option. We're thinking about doing this thing. Where we then describe what our rules are and there's this kind of back and forth between us and the potential developer about. How they can meet the rules or how close they can get to them and all of that. So these ongoing conversations, they're never real until somebody applies, right? So you don't know until somebody's applied. Uh, one of the ones that you've been recently, there's a lot of conversation about was the movie studio. On the Hennessy property, uh, that is, yeah, where Mike is pointing there. Uh, Patrick Millsap, uh, came in with, uh, uh, basically a first phase request on that. Did a presentation for us and withdrew it. So he never actually applied, or I guess he officially did, but he withdrew it right away before we had any process on it. Uh, he said at the time that he was hoping to come back with the full plan rather than do the face thing, just get approval for the whole plan. And he's had planners back in, uh, looking at what that would look like. Uh, you know, he took, uh, some of the public feedback that he got to heart. Uh, you know, they're trying to do something that's not quite in our idea because we generally are looking for mixed use. Um, so that, you know, the live, work and play can happen in the same place. That means less external impact. Uh, but that looks like maybe in the next few months, we're gonna be seeing an application from them again. Uh, what they brought in before was fairly far afield, so I'm not sure that that one, not sure how that will play out. Um, you know, the benefit of a movie studio is that it's mostly contained. It creates a lot of tax benefit, but it's not really that. Close to what most of our plan is. So we'll, we'll see what the final plan that comes in looks like and, and what the council feels about that. The next one is the Merrill Village. So Harrison Merrill, who has that, that piece of land that projects into Chat Uchi Hills. That is actually a part of Palmetto that crosses both, uh, Cochran Mill Road and Atlanta Noonan. So it goes way into the city. Uh, that's the piece that Mike was talking about that has seventy-five hundred or, or some number around there approved through Palmetto. Uh, they also own just under five hundred acres just north of that, between that and the parkway. And they've been coming in, talking about the possibility of doing a Chat Uchi Hills village. So we have two types of development here that, that we allow. One is the hamlet, Serenby's a hamlet. Uh, the way that hamlets work is that most of their preservation is internal. They, if you have a thousand acres, you can develop on three hundred of them. You have to preserve seven hundred of them. That's the general practice. Um, villages are different. Villages basically do most of their preservation externally. They're buffered, but they have to buy development rights externally to build more densely inside of the village. So, you know, the villages are the thing that creates that preservation in the rest of Chat Uchi Hills. Uh, one, you know, built according to our rules would be a good thing because it would make that preservation start happening. And this idea that Mike was talking about in the TDR, that it's always been a part of our plan, which is. The people that aren't developing get to participate in the upside by getting the money from selling their development rights to the developers that have to buy them. To build more densely. Uh, that would be what would happen there. Uh, and again, if you want to characterize it, that's a town center like, uh, probably a smaller version of an Avalon or something like that. And that would be there on the parkway. Uh, again, you know, don't know till it happens, but I think it sounds like we're gonna be getting a plan in. Um, they've been asking a lot of questions, right? And that's really what that comes down to. We don't have a plan to show because we don't have a, a plan, but. They have been in quite a bit talking about it. Uh, there's another group that has been looking at a couple of different properties, not sure which one they have settled on, but they also sound quite serious. This is a, a much smaller, um, kind of movie studio related hamlet. So small studio, couple of stage, uh, buildings. Uh, a town right next to it. If you think about the way that Sanoy works, uh, Sanoy has some movie studio stuff right in the downtown, you know, where they were filming. Uh, uh, Walking Dead. And then it's kind of that model. We have a little town center and the people that are shooting the movie Walk the Lunch and all of that kind of stuff. Which would be more in keeping with the way that we've always talked about that fitting into Chat Uchi Hills. Uh, and again, that would be probably the way they're talking about it right now, a hamlet where they're doing most of the protection internally. Again, you know, the economy has been shifting, you don't know, but they sounded like they were, the next few months, they've been working on that. Uh, you know, at some point we'll hear for sure which piece of property they've selected. Uh, the, another one, uh, is the Buchart properties, Buchart, um. Carl Buchart owns about eight thousand acres in Chat Uchi Hills. Uh, the land starts at South Fulton Parkway. Kind of halfway between, uh, Rico Road and, um, Cochran Mill. And then basically goes from there up to the river and then all the way along the river up to Campbellton. And over the course of the last twelve years, fifteen years, we've talked to dozens of people that are looking at projects in there. Uh, none of them have ever come to fruition. Uh, this last one feels more serious. They're, they're talking to a developer that is looking at basically a master plan for the whole property. Which would be, you know, a village on the parkway with the commercial stuff on that, maybe a couple of smaller hamlets scattered, uh, along it. Don't really have a lot of detail on that. We haven't seen, I mean, we haven't really had any detailed questions on that yet. But we're just being told that that's close. Um, and that's, that's. Fairly new that one. The other ones we've been talking about for quite a while. And that's part of the thing, right? We've been talking about the movie studio one for a year. We've been talking about the small movie studio one for about a year, uh, you know. Uh, we'll see, we'll see how that comes in, if it comes in. Uh, the last one is another small thing that we just heard about this morning, actually, which is another hamlet. That would be on the Buchart property potentially or, or property right next to Buchart, depending on where they end up. Uh, that is, uh, the way that they're characterizing this, and this is one that we've also talked about before. Because they had come in and talked to us about two years ago, about doing this content generation studio thing. Uh, not movie studio, but, but more aimed at, uh, like TV content, YouTube content, stuff like that, very small studio spaces. Uh, but a lot of, uh, stuff around it that's also potentially shootable, like, you know, the houses or the, the, the big shop. Or whatever it might be, something that might be the set for something. Uh, there's this trend right now, uh, for things like TikTok of having houses that are looked to all practical intents and purposes from the outside. Just like a house, but then, you know, some TikTok person is filming in a room or whatever. And so that's the, the kind of theory that they're talking about. And again, just a normal hamlet outside of that, that would just be the industry that would be driving that hamlet. The sites that they were talking about were toward the northern part of the Buchart property or, or adjacent to that. So. And those are the main ones right now. Uh, again, you know, we, when you come to, uh. Particularly city council workshops, uh, you know, if one of those comes up, we'll mention it. Um, but until there's an actual plan coming in, there's not really much to talk about with any specificity, right? You don't know how many houses they're planning, what the buildings look like, where, what the layout's gonna be until they've actually done that. And for them too, a lot of the times, you know, they're looking at a property, they're, they're optioning a property. They're saying, if we can figure out how to make this project work on this in the context of your zoning, we'll move forward. And they're coming to talk to Mike or, or Mike and I about, so what are your rules again? You know, this looks really cool, Chat Uchi Hills, but how does it actually work? And, uh. A lot of them, I think, get scared off because our rules are pretty tight, they're pretty tough. Um, but again, right now it feels like a lot of them are kind of coming to a head. Uh. So that's that part of it. Um, now we're gonna do Q and A after. We've got a, a section here for the council to, if they've got any comments, anything that they want to say. And then I'm just gonna come down and facilitate Q and A, right? Just whatever questions people have. So, uh, we will do district by district. I'm just gonna stand up here and, yeah, answer questions or, or direct questions to the right person. So Ruby, we'll start with District One.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to say thank you for coming out, um, your time tonight. So in District One, uh, you heard Mike talk about the Pizza Farm, which is a little bit in District One. And also the Bear Creek subdivision, which we will hear more, more information the first of the year on that. Um, the other thing is the community outreach, um, program. And so in two thousand and twenty-one, we had a meeting and we started, um, talking about community outreach program. And in twenty twenty-one, we did the Memorial Day, um, event. And we did a Oktoberfest and Christmas in Chat Hill. And each time it, it grew, uh, over time. But one thing I do want to say about our team, we have a team of people that we all work together. And Ms. Carrie Atkins, I want to make sure I say it right. I want to say thank you and to your mom and everyone who has been working on the team, um, just bringing in ideas. Um, to make it happen. Uh, this year so far, we did a movie, uh, which was in April. We did the Memorial Day event and we just finished up the, uh, Oktoberfest. And on December the third, we will have Christmas in Chat Hills. I also want to say thanks to the art farm, the local churches, um, the park members, just to everybody. I don't, I don't want to miss anyone, names or anything, um, to the staff, I mean, just everybody. So I hope it covers everything. But, um, those are some of the things I've been working on. And like I say, we have a great, uh, uh, working with the community events. And one of the things is to build relationships. And I think that when we had the Oktoberfest, we had community churches here. And people, so I'm just hoping that we can continue, uh, doing a great job. And I just want to say thanks to everyone.
Thanks, Ruby.
Yeah, guys, glad, glad you showed up this evening. Um. I personally been out of loop for a couple of months. I had a bad accident, broke, broke some ribs, broke clavicle, punctured lung. Spider scapula torn face up, that's your face heal back up pretty good. Um, but anyway, it is what it is. It's all true. But anyway, um. Everybody knows what, what I've been working on, what my concerns have been the last few months is, is, uh, just addressing some of the zoning things. I've done some research on some TDRs, um, may be a good thing for somebody who's sitting on two or three acres. Maybe a bad thing for somebody sitting on a hundred. Some cities it works out great. Some cities, corporate America comes a scar small up and sits on like a stock. So, um, I know, well, you know, for buying hunting ranches and things like that, you know, the bank won't let you cut your trees. Cause that's your value, that property, without a house on it. That's their cloud. So I'd be careful. I'd really study that TDR thing. Um, you know, we are zoning set up right now. You know, you can't build on so many acres. It is what it is. You got a chunk of land, you might wanna use some of that. Um. Either way, um, it is what it is. I, I, I hated to miss, I know, um, Tom and these guys got together. Have a meeting on some of the zoning issues. Unfortunately, I was two weeks in the healing, so I was unable to attend that meeting. But, uh, you know, um, you'll see this is left blank, then anything to stop my name, but I've been talking to me, you know, as town hall meetings. Uh, my concern is before this map is completely full, is to, uh, try to get some property rights back in your hands. That's all I got.
Yes, and thank you all for coming. I just wanted to give a couple of updates, um, from District Three. Uh, the Gears Ferry Bridge, which has been closed for several years, has been moving forward with a little bit of progress. So at this point, uh, the inspections have been done and it should be let out, right? That's the term, Robbie. Um, let out to do the work, which should start maybe next, uh, first quarter next year. Fingers crossed it's gonna be done next year. We'll see.
Should be.
But should be. Anyway, I want to thank Robbie for staying on top of that. Um, uh. Fulton County's been moving, some of the departments have been moving kind of slow due, due to COVID really and some other things, but it will get done. Uh, also wanted to thank, uh, the Nature Center, um, and, and Ruby, we had a citizens day there this year. Which was free to all the citizens to come and check out the Nature Center again. Thank the city, they offered a, a, a grant to the Nature Center through the Hotel Motel, um, funds. And that was able to help, help them fund up again, since they had a soft opening when they reopened, um, during COVID. So they're doing really good and, um. We're excited about that. A lot of people on the Parks Commission have supported them and, and our council. We're excited about that. A lot of people on the Parks Commission have supported them and, and our council has as well. Um, I guess I, I've helped Ruby with a couple of things. So, uh, a year or so before. We, uh, worked with the city to pretty up the lobby and have, uh, an exhibit area out there. We could use hotel motel funds for that. But just the idea of putting up our city hall and, and not using really our taxpayer funds to do that. So we can use that as a tourism thing and then we get to enjoy the benefits of that as well. I, I really, uh, enjoyed working on those exhibits. I worked on the Cackle Corner Historical Exhibit this year. And learned quite a bit about Cackle Corner, which is, you know, a, a, um, a historic mark in, in District Three. Um, and anyway, I also maintain, uh, Chat Hill's history website, so that information is now archived on there. We did, uh, uh. An exhibit on Bear Creek Nature Center and we also did one on the trails in Chattahoochee Hills. Also worked with the Parks Commission on, on creating, um, a new map, updating a new map for Cochran Mill Park. And adding, um, they're in the process of working with the city to add more trail signage, which would be marked on the map. Um, with the goal of, of, of helping people not get lost so much. Cleaned up the, um, PS a little bit too. And just to let you know how much work the Parks Commission puts into the parks, especially Cochran Mill Park. And just to give a shout out to our number, I, I think Roland probably does more trail work there than anyone else, but the whole Parks Commission is just amazing. And I work, thank you. And then also let you know that, um, speaking of what Ruby said about building relationships, I think that's really important. Cause especially in our rural district, we're so separated by the, the amount of space between where we live. It's really hard to stay connected. We each have our own little silo we enjoy, whether it's a church or a, a community we live next to. But I think, um. My, my small contribution is writing some stories for the city's newsletter and, and my own newsletter. And just connecting people. This last month, I wrote a couple of stories about a couple of veterans in our community who've lived here a long time. And also, um, a, a resident who works for the VA to help with homeless veterans. So it's just a way of connecting people. And if any one of you know some neighbors you would like. To have featured in a story, let me know. And, and especially if there's elders in the community, before we lose their wisdom. And they have stories to share. I mean, this is part of our heritage and we said we wanted to preserve it. So I think we can all take a part in that. And thank you again for attending.
Thanks, Laurie. Um, I was thinking about some of the questions that I've had recently, so, um. Darryl covered a few of those because that was one has been the sewer. Um, thinking in my district, what's been happening. Of course, Airbnb development, um. But you've answered that. And I also was thinking, when you talk about gravel roads, I think if they disappear, something has tragically gone wrong. So, um, but the other question I've gotten recently is, um, short-term rental. I do get that question because we tend to have a good bit of that. If you ever pull up, um, one of the. Airbnb mapping or anything like that, you'll see that there are a lot of options within Airbnb and kind of around, um. And so the biggest question, I think, um, folks have learned now that come down and they get their license, right? Um, because it's sort of, it is running a business. Um, and we've always had the Airbnb in, which has always provided us. Um, with where a lot of the hotel motel taxes come from. And now we're collecting more because of the Airbnb and the VRBO. Um, but the main thing is getting the license to do that. And what we're finding is, you know, your neighbor will let us know. So, um, um. But, um, the other thing I have gotten questions about, and I'm sure as it sounds like. The potential new developments coming in, we're going to see a little bit more of this and everybody else here will get a chance to, to tackle this, this issue. Um. But the biggest thing is the, it's, uh, the hotline that we do have that we set up. Uh, I believe our contract was renewed recently in July. Was that a July one date?
It'd be for, yeah, it'd be coming up in February, I think.
Yeah, right. It's coming out, yeah, it's coming up.
Okay. So that's with lodging revs, which is our, the, did you say March?
Yeah, right around it. It's right around that time, but it's coming on.
Okay. Well, the, the good news is, I think, what, what that's helped with is, um, the hotline, I think is the biggest issue. So, uh. I think a lot of folks in the Sierra area are familiar with that. Um, and the main thing is to capture, there's certain things that it's great for, which is, I think the two biggest things. Is parking and noise. Um, and recently, we just made sure that. If there is a complaint, it goes to the hotline and the hotline tries to call the homeowner. If the homeowner doesn't respond within an hour, then the hotline should then call the Chat Hills Police. There were some questions if that was being done, but now we've definitely, one of the city, and there are cities that do that, but they will be dispatched, um, first. For noise and parking issues. And a lot of that's just, the parking is really around safety and. Is, um, when our ordinance is here in the city. Um, and those are things that they can enforce, things like how many people are at the house. I mean, unless it's a massive party, it gets kind of like, there's six people and should be four. It gets real, I mean, that's going to be a hard one, but we do log that. And Dana has a list and we get a report from lodging reps. And we can start seeing trends, certain properties that have had issues and address those. So, um. Anyway, we've, I think so far we've had a good success with the program. Um, not only with being able to address complaints and hopefully solve those, but the main thing is, is to call the hotline. Um, and so we're just going to, I believe we're just going to keep working with lodging reps. Uh, and some other cities around us have, um. Recently signed up the, with the same program. Um, so we're ahead of the game, I like to think. Um. But I think that's the, I, I think that's the biggest thing. Of course, we have our, um. Our stray dog program, and I don't know if y'all have seen the kennel out back. That was donated by CoCo's and it's been great. This is the time of year when it gets cold outside, so we don't like to. House them and, and Chief Little and his team do great. Matter of fact, we got to call, um. Uh, text, we're on a text, just so everybody knows how this works. I'm going to text, I'm going to text. Um, Carla Carabina, who's our, who's our, um, liaison with CoCo's. Uh, and also Suzanne who runs CoCo's. And then the police now, they are, they're aware of the process, which is. Group text to say there is a dog that's been found. And then we, we work to, to sort that out pretty quickly. But it is getting cold out, so we try to work that, the overnight stays are going to be a little bit harder. So what I'm asking for, um, are some fosters and folks that are willing, um. If these, if we need something to do with these dogs, typically they need to be vetted before they can get it become. Get in your home, but you really have to be, sign a contract with CoCo's, right? Because of liability reasons. Um, because we're not doing that. They can come to my house, but, um. But yeah, that's all. I think both of those programs are going, going well. And so. Thanks for folks that participate and that if, if I'm texting you a lot about finding or looking for something, apologize, but. They're getting home.
Yeah, I just want to say that, uh, it's, it's very encouraging seeing you all here. Uh, this is extremely important. Uh, to the city to, to have y'all all involved in whatever way we can. One of the things that really got me involved. Uh, and, and people asked me to run for, uh, for council person, uh, was. That they had a lot of concerns as far as, uh, clear communication between council and the government of this city and the people of this city. Um, one of the biggest heartfelt concerns that I've had ever since I've been here. Is seeing, uh, a lot of the direction of this city communicated to the people. Okay, so some of the things that we've been, or at least that I've been trying for and, and working towards. Is clear communication between staff and the people and the council. And here, I see my, I see my role here possibly quite a little bit differently from some of my colleagues. Um, and I respect everything that they're doing. I don't mean this as a slight in, in the least, but, uh, I am. Predominantly here to try and facilitate, uh, the people's involvement and, and represent, uh, their positions. With staff and try to facilitate, uh, um, policy that would express, um, your concerns. Okay? And that is still deeply, uh, a, a concern of mine. Uh, to do that, uh, through several different ways. One of the first things that I attempted to do and along with the citizens committee. Was to, uh, uh, get us ported over and, and, uh, absorbed by Cavett County. Uh, I thought that that was extremely important and I still think it, that would be a great, uh, direction for this city. Uh, for several different reasons, various reasons. The number one thing that it would eliminate, or at least would facilitate, would be. Uh, access to great schools. Okay? And that is, uh, something that I'm still, uh, focused on and would love to see happen. Although that's been said on the back burner. Uh, also, and, and it's, it's heartening to see, uh, Mike stand up. And present all the projects in a, in a format that the way that he did to clearly communicate with the citizens of the city. Um, uh, and, and I would like to see more of that, you know, we've talked about that from time to time. I know that, uh, a lot of times we get, uh, you know, we get on the track and we've got the train going and. And we've got to take care of city business and, and different things. And a lot of that just doesn't happen. Uh, but seeing all of y'all here is heartening. Because you're tuning in to what's going on and you've heard some things that you probably have not heard before. This is a great idea. Town hall meetings, I believe, are the purest form of democracy that you can have. Uh, because we're communicating directly with you, the mayor presenting what's going on, the general direction. And then all, just to hear you voice all of your concerns, which I'm looking forward to. Uh, I believe that's a great thing. Um, but, but still, there's some things and some hurdles that we need to, uh, to accomplish and, and get over. Uh, and I'm not going to get into all the details, but predominantly that's why I'm here. Is to represent not just my district, but all of your concerns as much as I possibly can. I have, uh, had some setbacks over the last few months. I have not been able to attend many meetings. But I believe I've overcome those setbacks and, and I'm going to try to serve out my term to serve you all. Um. There's some great projects going on with, uh, some of the council people, but, uh. My role here is to try and shape policy as a representative of the people. Um, and, and that's pretty much it. I'm looking forward to y'all's involvement. I hope you stay engaged. Um, a lot of times it's kind of disheartening to a person that wants to see things changed and then not see people be involved. Uh, in that way. And, and you all being here and being engaged in the way that you are is, uh, extremely. Uh, uh, heartening to, to me as a councilperson. So, um. You know, uh, glad you're here. Looking forward to the rest of the meeting. Um, thank you.
Thanks, Trey. So a couple of quick things before I come down. Uh, first off, I hope everybody recognized. When they were speaking, what an amazing team that we have here on the staff. Um, not just that they're so engaged and thoughtful about it. I mean, it's tiny but mighty, right? You're, you're looking at the people that are responsible for most of the work happening right here. Uh, but the sense of ownership that they have is something that you can absolutely feel. Um, and I spent a lot of time in other cities. I promise you, it is not this way in every other city. We are incredibly lucky to have the group that we have. Uh, we also have, uh, an amazing. Coterie of volunteers. We have people on a planning commission. We have people on a parks commission. We have a historic commission. We have a new convention visitor bureau, uh, to. Use some of those tax revenues that come from the hotel motel tax that you can only use in certain ways. Uh, that is just coming together. And again, all volunteers. And I promise you, you know, even for those of you that actually take the money that we get paid, uh, it comes down to pennies per hour. Uh, given the amount of time it takes to do this job correctly. So, uh, there's volunteer work up here too. I don't care how you look at it. The other thing too is the community is full of that. Uh, you know, Brick Works just did a blood drive today, uh, there. The food bank was going on yesterday when I was here. Uh, the churches in the community, there's just so much of that kind of energy in this community. It's an amazing community that way. And, and just thinking too about what this place would be if it weren't a city, right? Uh, before we became a city, we were a tiny little corner of Fulton County. Uh, less than one percent of the voting population of Fulton County had absolutely no say in our outcomes down here. Um, if we had not become Chattahoochee Hills right now, we would be a part of the city of South Fulton, less than three percent of their voting population. Again, not nearly enough to be important enough to have any say in our own future. The fact that we're a city, I mean, I'll grant you that nothing is ever exactly as you would want it to be, but the fact that we're a city, and Troy's point, the fact that we're engaged. In controlling our own future and working on an outcome that's different from the one that is happening literally in every place in the Atlanta region. Is impressive. So I'm, I'm thankful too that people are here to participate in that. Mike brought up, uh, that we're doing some work, uh, coming up. Uh, when we did the comp plan update a couple of years ago, there's a work product list from that, things that you're supposed to get done. That have come out of that, right? And so the comp plan tells you the things that you've already agreed on, but says there are these other things that you still need to finish up. We've just engaged some support to get that done. And a part of that process is going to be a bunch of public meetings. Where we can talk about some of these issues that are right now outstanding, where there's some difference of opinion on how we address a particular issue. Uh, you know, there, we've been lucky here that we've always been able to attract experts at the top of their fields. In zoning, land preservation and all of that, because what we're doing here is so unique and interesting. Uh, but, you know, leveraging that and getting them in and keeping them in front of the community is something that we are very much about. And, and continuing to do. So. Again, I'm going to come down and take questions. Meeting with a street curb about two months ago and have a bunch of broken bones in my knee. Which actually, when I'm walking around, isn't so bad, but it's why this happens. I'm not waiting for a flood on one half of my body. My, my brace is just kind of. So Darryl has a microphone. If you have a question, the reason we're doing it this way, this is one of the. Things, by the way, we've been talking a lot about trying to make it so that more people can be engaged. Right now, there's twenty people on Zoom watching this meeting. Um, they're hearing this as well, right? This is a way that makes it easier for more people to know what's going on. Uh, we don't have a lot of money, so the technology for this is expensive and we're using. To, to, uh, Robbie's point, some relief funds to upgrade our system. We're going to have by next month's council meeting, hopefully, the fully operational, push the button to talk up here, no. Feedback, all of that, so that everybody can hear, including the people on Zoom, what the questions are and what the answers are. Which is why I'm wearing one of these, why I'm down here and why Darryl has a microphone. So if you have a question, please say it in the microphone, so people at home can hear you as well. Maybe wave and then, uh, we'll try to do best we can. The, 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 and a person, we'll, we'll come right back to you.
I will share this microphone, I promise.
I promise to.
Okay, so we just recently adopted a new unified development code, am I correct with that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, in that, did we drop the definition of town?
Yes.
Okay, so it merged with. Okay, village. Okay, cause you mentioned town just a few minutes ago. With a movie studio, maybe a smaller movie studio that had a town.
That's, that's a hamlet, but no, they're, they're trying to get a town feel with the studio incorporated into the town.
Okay, so that would not.
I'm using the colloquial term, they're not, not as on end.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to say. And in that unified development code, um, did we have a maximum? Or minimum number of hamlets or mixed-use hamlets that, that they just have to fit a certain acreage?
Correct. So there, there are a couple of things that I've seen, and I'll just go ahead and address a couple of things I've seen floating around out in the ether too. Uh, we never had a limit on the number of hamlets. We never had, uh, a limit on the number of villages. There were some distance requires that, uh, distance requirements that effectively limited the number of villages. There were never distance limits between hamlets. So I, again, I've heard some of that out in, in, you know, Facebook or whatever.
And those, those college restrictions were renewed.
On villages, they were, yes.
On villages. And by definition of a village, it needs to be located on the parkway?
Within a mile of the parkway, it's supposed to be within a mile of the parkway. And again, to keep in mind the differences, right? The idea of the villages were that the parkway is where we have our biggest ability to get traffic in and out, right? The least impact on people living in the community. And so the idea was the densest development would happen there. The development that drives preservation externally would happen on the parkway. And that's the villages. One of the things that became apparent, and, and I mean, this is. One of the things that became apparent, and and I mean, this is a long and technical conversation, but over the course of time there were some minimum acreages put in on villages that were making it obvious that nobody would ever do one. Right, those are the things that create external preservation, we don't want to make it so that nobody does them, or else there will be hamlets everywhere in the community, right? And so we took those minimum distances back out, made those minimum sizes back where they were when it started, because they're mathematically correct then, to create the the level of preservation that you want. And the idea too was that, you know, if, for example, there were two property owners that were next to each other on that parkway, far away from where anybody's homes are, that wanted to two villages next to each other and buy up all those development rights, wouldn't you be better off concentrating that development in one spot where it's only bothering the neighbors there? Rather than forcing them to be in your backyard or in someone else's backyard, and that that was the math behind that that decision.
Okay, and um so the village doesn't necessarily have to have an egress or a a off of the parkway, it just has to be within the mile of a parkway, right? Because you can only have a certain number of curb cuts or egresses off of the parkway. And I think we've only, I think we only have like one more.
We only have one more, and and yeah, I mean, the that's a limiting factor, right, if you can't get access to the parkway, because they have that access to the parkway.
Right, okay, all right, and I just have one other question.
And and I'm going to let you go ahead.
I know, so um so we have a hundred and eight miles of roads, gravel and everything. All right, and how many of that is seen at byway roads, how many miles of seen at byway roads do we have? Is it a thirty-three mile loop or something?
That may be, uh that sounds about right, I just heard twenty-five behind me, it's it's somewhere in that range between twenty-five and thirty-five.
And the state is supposed to help maintain those?
No, no. Well, no, no, I mean, I I have had this conversation with G dot just recently, because I saw that floating around in the ether too. No, state has nothing to do with maintaining the roads themselves, state seating byways are not. No question, because that is a state road, so the maintenance of that road, but it's not because it's a scenic byway, it's not the end of the scene byway, it's only about the state road. That's right, so one of the things, for example, because you know, the the reality of these kind of developments too, is they go to the state and they look for state incentives and all of that kind of stuff. And and one of the things that we're talking to the state about is to even consider something like that, we need some things too. Right, so Campbellton Redline at one point was Highway seventy the whole way through, and the state maintained the whole thing. But South Fulton Park way was at Fulton County Road. And one of the things that happened when the city was formed was they kind of switched that a little bit, now part of Campbell and Redline and part of the parkway is G dots, we're telling G dot, we need them to take both of all of those. Because it's a lot of road to maintain, and if more traffic is coming, we need them to step up and do that. And so it's it's things like that that are part of these conversations, again, if an application comes, there are going to be a list of things that we have to have to make it work for us too.
Sir, sir, can you speak into the mic?
And and now, one of the last couple of council meetings that someone got upset, it took six months to get our road fixed. Why don't, we don't need the development of the movie theater of seventy, someone should say, but that is not our road. We do not maintain seventy, right, and the parkway that goes through, except from seventy down to the bridge, we maintain, so just to be clear, that's that's not our road, it goes to our city, but it's not our road, and we do not maintain them.
I'll I'll say this too, when when that thing happened, when all those potholes down on that part of seventy for a while. I mean, there were a heck of a lot of phone calls that that man made, that I made, that that man made to our respective contacts at G dot pushing on them to get that fixed, right, but but that's just the process, right, so I'm going to move on to You got the microphone.
I I just, I have a couple of comments, um first, this is the mayor, just so you know, I'm trying to win the next billion so I can buy Merrill's property, okay, just so you know.
By the way.
That's my goal, okay, and I'm not going to develop it, ju- just so you know. So that's
Sorry, I've been I've been asked to ask people to say their name, just again for the record.
Debbie Kelso. So that's my goal, just so we're clear, okay, so wish me luck, um second thing. The the sewer line and fixing the roads and the the crush and run or whatever, that's on there dying? Okay.
Lady over Fulton County today, and several times, we communicate very well, and she even going to shut down the road because they wanted to fix before uh before it got worse, and so our communication, we're we are going to, in the process, it's not happening today but they're going to close down Rico Tatum, Twain Cockermill over to Atlanta Noonan. Because there's no one lives in that road, there's there's just a cut through road until they finish it, and what we're going to do is she and I have rode ridden the roads and looked and seen what they are, and at the end of the project, we're going to do it again, and they're going to, even if we have to do it internal they're going to reimburse the city, it's going to be done back the way it was, also, the where your road meets Atlanta Noonan we've talked them in because they're going to cut across the road, they're going to do aprons. They go, we have talked them into doing paved aprons, so where you, where you know, you, it's really rough right there where the gravel meets the pavement Atlanta Noonan, they're going to be apron, they're going to pave a section of that that makes you come in and out of that road better, and overall Rico Tatum as as well.
By the way, the ugly parts of Rico Tatum are not in City of Chattahoochee Hills, just to be clear, that's in a neighboring city.
I mean, you did a good job cleaning them up with the 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 washboard and all that, so thank you.
And to be clear, too, Charisse's boss and Charisse's boss's boss and Charisse's boss's boss's boss all have also had that conversation, we're clear. They're going to take care of that road, they've also been trying very hard to protect the trees and all of that, there've been a lot of conversations about those trees and people's front yards and all of that. I I will say that their contractors aren't as good as their commitments that the that the county is making, but they're also committed to making it right, so if they cut something down they weren't supposed to, they're going to plant something, we're working really hard to make sure that that doesn't have any negative impact, so once I see.
Um and my last one is really to Robbie, and I don't, I'm not pointing your finger at you, but can you explain what happened with the elections and how it it was messed up in the morning and what you did to fix it and know that we won't have that issue again?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a mic, but the mayor's familiar.
I mean, I've I've actually spent more time talking about it than he has, so the 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 understanding of what happened was there were some issues, some glitch in their addressing thing. And they had to push through a change and then fixed it, right, so there was a problem for the first hour, everybody's address was in Cobb County, they weren't letting people vote. And then, once they fixed that, it worked fine the rest of the day. Um so, you know. I can't defend Fulton County elections, I can't, right, and and they're the ones that have to do those elections, right, those national level elections. Um but I will say that, you know, the second we started calling them, telling them a problem, they had people down here, they fixed the problem. Uh it's unfortunate for the few people that had to leave and could come back, right, they had to go to work or whatever and do a provisional ballot. Now, those provisional ballots were counted, but you know, that that was a problem for them. Um there was another thing that was floating around on on Facebook that, again, I just want to address, because I've had this conversation in depth with the head of Fulton County elections. There's a a thing that people were posting about the fact that um the Secretary of State's Office updates election information within twenty-four hours of getting them from a county, right? And people were confusing the idea that the whether you voted or not records, which the Secretary of State's Office keeps meant that your vote had been counted, and those two things aren't connected. So all the votes were counted here, they're absolutely certain of that, and you know, at some point, you can go in and prove that point, find your ballot, right, because they keep those. But in the meantime, they wanted to be absolutely clear that the voter participation thing on the Secretary of State's website is something that they have sixty days to send the information to the Secretary of State to update in the twenty-four hours that they updated. My understanding is, because mine just updated today, right, I I've heard from a lot of people that they've been tracking theirs, and there's updated today, so sixty days is the outer limit, it's not the the what they're actually doing, but that does not mean that your vote didn't count, it just means that they didn't update that thing. Um uh again, you know, the the fact that you can have problems with elections in this day and age seems beyond me, but it it apparently does. Not not for, not for national elections, no, and and the reality is that the timing of the other things too, you know, the the idea of having the uh uh mail-in and all the other things that you have to do to have an election, means it's hard for us to do it, period, right? Uh and and to have it one way sometimes and one way the other time, it just doesn't make sense, we do look at that quite a bit. Um again, you know, it's it's above our pay grade, we're not the ones doing it, but my understanding was it was resolved and all the votes were counted, and you can prove that point on your particular vote with them. No, no, you're fine, we'd get the microphone, because again, I want people to be able to hear it on.
I I heard that if your driver's license is Palmetto, you could vote in Chat Hills. Um also, that you lived here and have all your life.
That's that's not the case, I I I know that they had an issue with yeah, I mean, there are a lot of rumors out there, I mean, I've got Palmetto on my license, and no, that was a fun conversation at the DMV, because I pulled out my business card, I said, I promise you, I know that I live in Chattahoochee Hills, but that particular clerk, um no, that that was not the issue, the issue was that there was something in the the software that morning, that for a chunk of people was putting them in Cobb County. And you know, they, again, once they rebooted or whatever they did, they forced it, and then it corrected itself. Oh, wait, 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 no, no, I there was a hand here first.
Uh to mayor and to Richard, I hope you guys heal soon, I just had a hip replacement, I know that those first two weeks were very painful. And if you guys had all those accidents, I I I feel sorry for you and blessings that you healed soon, okay? To both of you, oh, and my name is Maggie Goodman. And Troy, about the communication, that's awesome what you're talking about, the reason that most of us are here is because we got that little postcard. Now, I don't know who's in charge of sending that, but that is fantastic, it's got all the dates, it's got the times easy to read, not real tiny little, you know, writing. Perfect, so if we can get one of those postcards sent out, a- anytime there's a meeting, we'll be here if we can. So we love that.
And that kind of thing, right, I mean the zoom, all of those things.
This is great, this is great, well, the the last thing I wanted to ask about was um what about the uh Boys Club uh or the Boy Scouts, that little place on Upper Wooten, that little clubhouse?
Oh, the Scout Hut.
Uh can we do the Scout Hut, can we do something to fix that, um what can we do with it, it's such a great little icon of the area? We would love to make that just something really beautiful.
Yeah, Maggie, we we've had a couple of community meetings on that, we've got lots of ideas, what we don't have is um a plan. And we need money, but the property is less than an acre, so we're not able to put a septic system in there or water, so that really limited limits what we can do with it, what we're doing right now is just to shore it up, so Darrell and his has had have they diverted the water away from it, patched roof a little bit, some done some things there. So we're waiting till we have a little bit more money, and maybe the property um that enjoys it is for sale, if there's anyone here that has an interest in purchasing that, and maybe allowing a septic system on it.
Okay.
Would gladly accept that.
We're always looking for sympathetic neighbors there.
There you go, last question, um if someone like Doug was inquiring as to uh maybe putting one of those quilts on part of the property or on the property, what are the procedures and what do you have to do to get one of those quilts put on your, you know, like a barn or whatever you have?
Okay, so um I coordinate the Chat Hills Barn Quilt Trail, and all you need to do is contact me and we'll see if it meets the qualifications really, is you need to be able to see it from the road and it needs to be on an accessory structure like a barn or a building in order to get a free barn quilt. And the city, the city's course set through hotel motel funds, and what they do is they pay for the materials and I paint the barn quilts. And and install them, now, if you don't have um an accessory structure and you want a barn quilt on your property somewhere, you can't commission me, and I'll do it like for a batch of brownies or something.
You gotta be careful about, you know, having things near the road.
Hey, I'm Susan Calderon, and I actually worked the Chattahoochee Hills Voting Precincts on Election Day. So I can share a little more to just clarify a few points. Um the city that your driver's license states, whether it's Chattahoochee or Palmetto did not come up, um and even if you have a different di- different address in your um beyond your driver's license or you recently moved, as long as the picture was you and we could ask you questions to make sure that was your ID, it didn't really have to match, we just had to make sure that it was you in our database at your former address or your future address, and say you only get one vote, and then you're done. Um the issue was, there was another field in the database that said, this is Susan Calderon, this is her address, and she's assigned to vote at this precinct, and what happened was for a portion, not all of Chattahoochee Hills, but for a portion they were assigned a precinct in Cobb County, which made absolutely no sense because they live in Fulton County. And so on the day on Election Day versus when you vote in advance, you could vote anywhere in advance of Election Day. On Election Day, you have to vote where your assigned precinct is. So they showed up here because this was supposed to be their precinct, but the database had incorrect data in it, so whether they had a database upgrade or through the redistricting, the system had an error, and they didn't find it in their testing. We were the only area that was affected by that, um Fulton County did come, you know it seemed like it was all morning and it was lunchtime by time they come, but it was probably around nine o'clock in the morning. Seven and the problems were evident immediately, um that, and they showed us how we can override that issue. Uh we never saw the database, actually, they said, we heard rumors, voters, residents came in, said, I I called someone, they said the database is updated. On the equipment that we showed, whether there's multiple databases that mirror each other, or how it gets upgraded. Uh but we found, we were instructed on how to override it, so that we could allow you to vote here, but definitely, there were some residents as Tom mentioned, unfortunately, that weren't able to vote and actually showed up after it was announced that officially we were closed. And once that announcement is made legally, you can't allow one or two more stragglers to come in, so some residents came in the morning, and then they came at night, but they were just literally less than five minutes late and couldn't vote. So um I'm appreciative that the city followed up to make sure that we don't have any issues um on the December election as well.
Is a follow-up to that, the city pays a significant amount to Fulton County for our our election, not this election.
Hey Tom, I wanted to say one thing um about Susan, when we had the um event at the Bear Creek Nature Center we had Fulton County down here, and Susan was able to sign up, because we really didn't have a lot of people from Chat Hills to actually work at the polls. And so that day, she signed up, and there were some other members, I don't know if they was all, you know, here. But that was a great event to have um to be able to build those relationships, and so that we would have someone here in the city of Chattahoochee Hills that was at home.
Which is super important, right, it's nice to have neighbors here, because they also knew people.
Just so everyone, we did have another Chat Hills resident, however, she was assigned Palmetto libraries, so we had one resident here working, and then one at Palmetto Library.
Thanks, Susan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Portia Cross, and I am a new homeowner in the Crossroads subdivision, which is off of Lucas and Mill Road, and I had a I was curious and concerned, I was curious about the undeveloped area right across the street from me, and I think Mike may have talked about it. Lucas and Mill and Jenkins, um because it's it's definitely got a lot of piping and everything already in it, I was just wondering if it's ever going to be utilized.
That's that's the one that we're talking about, that's the Bear Creek subdivision.
Okay.
They're zoned, and they're working on their land disturbance permit, which is the first step to going in and actually starting to build stuff, and they plan to be building by March or April, right?
Thank you, and the other one is I'm concerned about my subdivision, Crossroads, which I think once upon a time had a HOA. And no longer, and so I got a letter from Nathan Green, and I was so excited, I said, I want to look at the city to address my subdivision and make sure it, you know, is kept, and I'm concerned about rentals, investors coming in there, and with me being a homeowner, I I want to really get actively involved, so I want to know, learn how to do that.
So interesting thing there, because my understanding, and I don't know, Mike, you probably will know the outcome of this, we had a meeting in the Crossroads subdivision. And what I heard, the feedback from that, or here with people from the subdivision.
Everybody.
I heard that the feedback was that they didn't want an HOA. We, we had a meeting to try to help them facilitate setting that up because to your point, it makes sense for neighbors to get together and think about those things. Uh, but the, the overwhelming feedback we got was they didn't want one.
Pretty much everybody initially showed up for that meeting was from Crossroads.
I will, I will say to, to an interested person, we are happy to have a meeting again. Right? Get some of your neighbors together that want to make the community better and have that conversation and we'll have that conversation again. Because we, we absolutely want to help with that. We recognize the benefit.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Hi, Linda Kozoreski, just a brief question. Can we do early voting at the Palmetto Library again or?
We have been lobbying for that. We have been, um. We'll see what the edict does because it's not early voting at Palmetto Library.
They do.
That's typically one of the early voting places. So it should be, are you asking for the runoff collection?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Yeah. It's just shorter.
I was, I was talking to the mayor of Palmetto about that the other day. That we, we, we are always pushing to make sure, you know, that there's one local. Did I see, I saw another hand back there. Tamara.
Yeah, hi, this is Tamara Schwartz. I wanted to get back to the developments a, a little bit and maybe you guys have spoken about this a lot. Oh, first of all, thank you guys all for coming too. I know you guys are taking time out of your days and, and busy schedules. So thank all you guys up there for doing this. Um. When I was listening to all the development projects, we kind of listed them all, like there's this one, this one. But obviously it seemed like there was one that you were talking about that seems like it'd be huge and a lot of impact. The one in Palmetto, is that right? So am I right? Did I, did I hear right that that is like disproportionately by, by large margins, much bigger than anything else that we're?
It's, it's not just that it's bigger. So our rules require a lot of things. We require buffering. We require, you know, either development rights being purchased or internal preservation, all of that stuff. The problem, the biggest problem with that one is it doesn't require any of that, right? The other huge issue for us is the only way you can get to it is by driving through Chattahoochee Hills. Right? So all of the impact of the traffic and all of that will be on our roads. Not on their roads. Now, you know, one of the opportunities that gives us because they're developers and talking about a village. On our property that's right adjacent to that and we're trying to use that to leverage some better quality on the stuff that's going to be impacting us here. But frankly, we don't have a lot of leverage, right? Cause it's already zoned. It's already approved by the neighboring town.
Yeah, I get, that was really my question because it sounded like compared to everything else we're talking about, that one is like, like orders of magnitude. Bigger and, and more problematic or more potentially problematic for us.
That's, I think it's the latter, right? More problematic, yes.
And, and is there anything that we can do or what's being done or?
I mean, you know, we, we threaten things like closing Cochran Mill Road, you know, uh, no, there's not much you can do. But the difficulty is, and this is a funny thing, right? We, uh, uh, sometime last year, there was a movie that came in kind of last minute and they wanted to close a road kind of last minute. And we knew that there was going to be a lot of damage to that. And we said, no, we're not going to give you a permit. You're, you're too late. It, it, it's not going to happen. And it wasn't three hours later that I got a call from the governor. Uh, saying, you gotta let this happen, right? Because look, all of our, I mean, you know, our elderly money, there's a lot of money that comes through from the state. And the other reality is, and this is an interesting thing too, uh, there is a, um, what's it? It's the battery factory. I forget the, the name of the company, but anyway. Oh, the Ruby plant, sorry, yeah, the Ruby plant, but that. That is over off of twenty and the little town that was in didn't have zoning that supported that. And so they said, no, you can't do that here. And so the state just revoked their zoning rights and approved it anyway. So I mean, you're always fighting this battle, right, of, of, you know, trying to do the best you can to talk people into doing the right thing. And here we use the argument that it creates more value for you. Which is a fact, right? You develop under our zoning. You have to follow some extra rules, but it creates more value, both for the developer and for the people living there. But if somebody that lives in another city doesn't buy into that theory. Right? And, you know, the developer, I, it's, it's not as easy to think just to say no. Uh, and we've got examples around us of that.
It is good. It is good.
We did let that move.
When the governor says we shouldn't let that happen and we do, and then they don't do what they say they do, we get the phone calls, say, hey, government, this is why we don't allow that.
No, well, no, the other thing too is, right? The governor will back you up then. You know, if they mess up your roads, you're building, right? So a, a, anyway, that, that's just, none of it's as easy as you might think. I, I see two half hands. Well, I see a, an fat hand and a half hand, so. By the way, wait, wait a second. There's a kid leaving. There was a kid here the whole night. A young adult, a, a wonderful lady who came to watch this thing and I just, I love that and appreciate that. I wanted to comment on it and probably embarrass her as much as I could as she's walking out the door. Thank you very much for being here.
I forgot my question. No, I, I got it. I got it.
You were gonna say nice things about us again.
Yeah, oh, there you go. There you go. Um, no, uh, the pizza, the pizza plate or pizza whatever in Palmetto, what, what is that cookie about?
So, so I have had quite a few conversations with them. Um, it is, uh, some of the folks involved in Mill Mushroom, they're doing, uh, facility there that's kind of like, uh, a training facility a little bit. It's a pizza restaurant. They're going to do menu work and all of that. But the other thing they're doing there is they're having a little section of, you know, small cottages where if there's an employee at Pete, or Mill Mushroom, that's having some sort of problem. They've been forced out of their house or whatever. They're divorced and don't have a place to go with their kid. They can live there for a while to get that sorted out, which I thought was really cool. Uh, most of that is actually on the Palmetto side of the land.
Okay.
Um, because again, our zoning is tough and, and they just didn't seem to want to figure it out, but it, they do have properties in Chattahoochee Hills too.
But it will be like restaurants or?
A, a restaurant.
For regular people.
My understanding, yes.
Industry related.
That's right.
Okay, my next question is, does the mayor of Palmetto share any of our vision about, you know, protect, protecting the air?
To be, what will be recorded.
My bad. You answered my question. Thank you.
He's a very nice man.
Clark is, but he is. This is his last year.
He's a very nice man, but I'll, I'll tell you something. You know, there are 10 million square feet of warehouses being built in Palmetto right now. Every million square feet is 700 semis a day.
Yeah.
Right? So 7,000 semis a day, that stuff's all fully operational, just in Palmetto. And if it's an Amazon warehouse, it's not just the semis, it's all the little trucks coming in and out. And again, uh, no aspersions on anybody. But that's impact that we're going to deal with too, right? And that's, that's the tough part.
And I don't know who handles, running along that same lines. I don't know who handles pin pouring a GPS location. But all the truckers basically go when they're coming to a new warehouse by GPS. They turn there to flash, cross the railroad track and right one on the corner, there's no trucks over double axles. They're already committed.
That's right.
There's no place to turn around.
And we go out there and write tickets every now and then and that message gets out, but the problem is 7,000 semis a day. Right? That message doesn't. It's not that much cash. That's the thing that drives me nuts. The warehouses don't create that much tax revenue. And what they do is they make certain that nothing good is ever going to happen close to them. Right? So what you're doing is you're diminishing the value, everything around it forever. And, and I mean, I, 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 I will not get on my soapbox about warehouses, but South Walton Parkway, the land that was annexed along South Walton Parkway, where another 20 million square feet warehouses are either built or in process. That was all supposed to be mixed use. The, the zoning plans for that, that we all agreed to were all about mixed use. And then suddenly annexed it and suddenly warehouses are allowed in excuse and here you go.
One more question, um. The road was closed for sewage. Is there being a sewage treatment?
They're, they're putting a sewer line in that's going to the sewage treatment plant. All over Camp Creek by way of a pump station in O'No. Right? So these are pump lines that are going from development nodes. Straight to, straight to the, the, the station up in Camp Creek.
So this big development for Mr. Muir is coming from Phillips Road all the way around Wilkerson Mill.
This line, that line will be part of.
Chattahoochee Hills. And everything.
Yeah, there's a pump station, uh, right behind the Crossroad subdivision, actually. It has been a small sewer plant. They're turning it into just a pump station. And all of that development is going to go from that, get pumped up to Camp Creek. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, everybody's.
They have to get.
All, all of that stuff's all happening instead.
Now, Mayor, this is something that I don't even know on Capitol. I'm just going to ask you, you may know this or not, but, uh, does that sewage line have anything to do with what Clark and them are developing? With kind of, uh, Rickham, old Rickham?
I'm sorry, with who?
Anything to do with the Palmetto development?
A hundred percent, yeah, that, that, that pump station at, that pump station at.
Through our city is going to be.
It'll be coming down Wilkerson Mill. Yep, a hundred percent. The water's coming from City of Atlanta. City of Atlanta water already comes through that area. They're upgauging the lines, but yeah, that's. A lot, actually, that's, it's interestingly enough, the, there's a water line that runs through the city that is 18 inches. It's huge. And it was built to supply Coeita County. And so there's actually plenty of water capacity down here. It's actually, that's why we always have the points about the water coming out of the hydrants and all that, because they have to keep the water moving because the pipe is so huge. And, uh, no, there's plenty of capacity for water. That's, that's not the problem. To your point, right? All the infrastructure kind of has to go together.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's all being worked that way, didn't you?
Yeah, I mean, I just had a comment about how we could try to, um, be an example to the city of Palmetto or whoever is doing that. Is to hold fast and steadfast to our zoning. And, you know, I mean, with what you've been sitting, standing up there, talking about, sitting up there, talking about all this development that's happening around our city. I don't see why we can't implement the mileage restrictions back again to keep from exploding. I mean, it just feels like that we're sitting here getting ready to just explode out to our borders, you know?
I think, again, I mean, the mileage restriction, that whole comment is a red herring. Because whether or not they're restricted doesn't change the number of them that are allowed, the, the number that's allowed to develop. All it does is intentionally force it to be more spread out, right? Intentionally force it to be more likely to be in more people's backyards, letting it compress. You know, if, if all the village work happened right in the middle of Buckart's property. It would affect fewer people than if you made it happen in four different places down the road, right? And that was the whole conversation about that. Now, you know, this is one of those things, part of this public process that we're going to be having as we go through the work plan. And this is kind of starting probably early spring, late winter. Is some education around that stuff too, kind of walking back through from the beginning. Here's what the theory is. There's not the math works. Because a lot of people weren't involved in that first conflict process, right? Uh, you know, we had, I don't know, almost 500 households involved in that process, but a lot of people weren't. Another 400 that weren't, right? And, and just giving the, the kind of, uh, foundation that's behind that, so that we can have that intelligent conversation then about, well, okay, does this flavor or that flavor make more sense? But let's all know that it's ice cream, right? And, and, and that is something that we're absolutely setting up for because it's become apparent that a lot of times the conversations are based, well, I heard they changed this and people don't really know why it was one way and why it was changed. And, and talking about the foundation of that is important.
Tom, can I ask Denise a question? So Denise, is your concern more about development or about, uh, the losing of the rural district area?
I, I think my biggest concern has been and always will be the way that we allow developers to manipulate our zoning by allowing special use permits and variances to properties. So, so that they, so that we help them fit into our zoning. Where we should stand true to our zoning so that we're not, i- if it doesn't fit our zone, it doesn't fit our zoning.
So this has been another thing that I've heard a lot of times recently, you know, why are we giving them special use permits? And that's a fundamental misunderstanding what a special use permit is. Special use permits are things that are allowed in different places under certain conditions, right? And, you know, if you're doing a special use permit for an event venue, you have to meet these standards and all of that. That's not an exception to the rules. That's the rules working, right? So the idea that we're doing special use permits is not us not following the zoning. It's us following the zoning. Uh, if you're doing something like, uh, you know, a hotel or, or whatever, right? Those are allowed in certain places, but you want to make sure that it fits in and that it's not causing disturbance around it, all that kind of thing, right? And, and there are some thoughtful pieces built into the codes and thoughtful steps that you have to look at to approve that thing, right? Variances are different. Variances are different because they are about how this thing fits on the property. And can you do the thing that you're expecting to do and all of that? Most of the variances that we've given haven't been for developers. They've been for people in the RL district, doing things that aren't necessarily rural feeling. But in that particular case, because they're lots so long or whatever, it's fine. It doesn't bother anybody, right? And so again, I, I just want to be careful about the way that we characterize that. There's not a lot of giving people a lot of leeway. Now, you know, we'll see, because I mean, I, I heard so many times, Tom Reed's bringing in the movie studio, right? And I was the one holding them most to account in that conversation. All right, I know what the zoning is and I know the kind of the cost, the plus minus on those things. And they withdrew, right? Part of it was here, but they also heard, oh my God, they're going to let us get away with not doing some things because the crowd doesn't want this thing. But things important in the zoning too, right? So we'll see when they come back in how that goes. But I don't think there's anything that we've done that is outside of the intent of the zoning. I mean, and I'm happy to walk through any example with you, uh, to do that, you know, I've, I've offered that to you before, actually. I'm happy to walk through the basis of the zoning and why the things are the way they are and why some of the things were changed. Because there were things over the course of time that changed because of particular people's interests. We've kind of gone back to the book, back to what the math says and, and less from these kind of things that weren't a part of that process, right? But just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No.
And I just want to speak, um, towards Troy and the communication. And I have been trying to run the information at, um, chathills.com email. So that I could email blast everybody that has given me their email addresses. So that everybody could be aware of when the town, uh, town hall meetings were going to be, the city council meetings. You know, just trying to keep everybody that gets internet out here and hopefully that's going to be an easier process thanks to Greystone. You know, in the near future. Um, so, you know, I didn't, I didn't get the postcard. I'm a loser. I'm sorry, but. But, um, but I'm glad to hear that a postcard went out to everybody. I mean, you know, I think one of the biggest things and one of our biggest concerns out here is that there is a lack of communication because we do live so far apart, which is great.
And it's one of those things too, right? I'll, I'll suggest that everybody signs up for the city newsletter because we have a newsletter that goes out every month that has a lot of stuff in it and come to meetings, right? Because there's a lot of stuff that gets talked about in meetings that isn't real yet, right? So if there's not an application for something, there's nothing to talk about, really. But I mean, we bring them up. You know, this person came in. I'll, I'll say we probably bring up 10 for every one that happens. Because a lot of people come to kick the tires. Very few people actually go all the way to buy the car, right? But, yeah, it's, it's, we, we try really hard. And I'll say this too. Take a look at the communication from, and I'm not meaning to pick on Palmetto. But Palmetto or Fairburn or any other city around us that isn't 20 times our size, we do better than anybody around here. So, I mean, I hear you, always can do better. We're always trying to improve the process. But I'll give huge credit to the staff and this group about intentionally trying to get as much of the word out as we can. I will stay all night, but I don't have to. I don't have to.
We got cookies.
Was there, was there another? So we have drinks if you like water and cookies. Thanks so much for coming. We will have meetings coming up early spring. Make sure you come to those. It'll be all good informative stuff.
Thanks, everybody on Zoom, those that can hear me okay. Appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Robbie.